No, I assume.
Related to print the minutes.
I thought it printed them. I read them because I wasn't here, so.
On the all application at the end, it's not clear what.
What?
I missed on the. Didn't, I wasn't thinking about that, absolutely going through everything. I missed stuff, I didn't even look.
Yeah, I read them, but I thought I hit the print, but like you said, so look for my papers.
Yeah, I think it says Jim made the motion and then like you seconded it. Seconded, but it doesn't say that, it doesn't say it passed, so it should be part of the minutes.
I did, I didn't, so I just, I didn't, I didn't.
Why don't you want to?
Maybe John can print it or Jake.
Jay, you'll have the copy of the minutes. Yeah, just one real quick, please.
About it is to our homework.
I read them and I kept reading it to try to figure out what it was saying, but I think it's one made the motion, one seconded it, then doesn't even say. You know, motion in favor, it should be correct.
That's why I did it. My printer along with my agenda.
You didn't go back in there and get.
No, I printed all this other crap earlier.
Yeah, it started.
For which one you're talking about?
Right, yeah, the all application. This bottom there, right where your finger is. That's, doesn't say anything.
Yeah, you're right, okay.
It should say, it should say Jim Sickle made a motion.
Yeah.
You seconded it.
Yeah.
All in favor. Just for the record.
Yeah.
You let service, you must have the wife. Yeah, it's right there, see. There's short term rentals and it's a, it says Jim Sickle's, well, it should say, made the motion second and then all in favor.
So we could, we could prove.
Yeah. Yeah. And there were a couple of spell.
Yeah, I know, we had picked up on you, yes.
We're missing ones or two.
Missing Jimmy and Bobby.
Bobby's coming. I was hoping Jimmy came, I want to ask him if he can get me a load of material. I found the farmer, he cut my corn today.
We did get the text, he didn't cut any, yeah.
Came and cut it.
They were cutting off on Merwin Road, Milton the other day. So maybe look up to the mountain.
Yeah, I think they were on twenty-two.
Yeah.
They showed up this morning, all gone, like that. I got signed contracts and.
Where they get good purposes.
I gave them, you know, pender brass, but they went with an engineer from. Falling, I don't know why, the architect had that. Supposedly they have tests on the fourteen, they get the best on the fourteen, I don't know if they'll make December, but they'll make January. I think worst case scenario. I don't think the most recent, because like that's wrong.
Yeah.
That's wrong, because when I went to the draft.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It has marked up, so I may have passed some stuff.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, it's just that one. The old approval wasn't clear what actually happened, I know what happened, but.
Alright, so Jay, you don't want table then? Want to do that? Table proving then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, you all ready, Jay? Okay, welcome to the November planning board meeting. First item is agenda, the approval of the minutes, there were some questions, Jay thinks that these are a little incomplete. So I'd like to hold off till next month for approval, so we can get that resolved.
We're also holding on the August.
On, on the August, right. Jay, any correspondence?
I did forward one email. That was intended as public comment, I had a conversation with Don Ingram, Joe Croco. Art Bass and, and myself regarding some of the discussion last, or at the end of the lettuce planning board meeting. And I also spoke individually with Nan regarding the same, so we are making progress.
Okay. Thanks, Jay. Conflict check, anyone have any issues with any of the applications for us tonight? No? Okay, whole business, first item in the agenda is ONG minds, public hearing, like a motion open the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion made, second. All in favor?
I.
They posed, alright, so the meeting, the hearing is open, I, I will make a comment.
There ourselves lead agency.
I wouldn't do that yet, yeah. There are several questions that have come up from the board regarding this particular application. And one of them involves whether or not the non-conformity for this application still exists. Based on fact that it hasn't been used in several years. And typically, the code requires the loss of the non-conformity after two years. Having said that, I have asked counsel. To look into this matter. Now, the, the board has before them confidential memo from counsel. It just, that reiterates the fact that I spoke to him and asked him to look into this. He will be looking into it, as a result. I would like to keep the public hearing open, not receive any comment tonight on the application until we get a determination from council. Board okay with that? I think it's, it's in our best interest to proceed that way.
I'll make a motion to keep the public hearing open, not take comments and table it for the next meeting or until we get a response from our attorney.
Message, no, motion made, second. All in favor? Posed, carried. Okay, I'm sorry about that, ONG, but. I think it's in everyone's best interest that we proceed in that, in that vein.
Next month will be.
Well, the public hearing is, it's kept open, so, but I can't guarantee it'll be on for next month until we have a determination. Correct, we're just taking no comment at this point, there's no sense opening the application for comment, and that's it. Okay. Okay, Shepard. Shepard application?
Don't move past that.
Was going to, during on ten, if not, yet entered to the bench.
Okay.
I wish it does per se.
Okay, we can do that then. So let's move to new business. The Montech, site plan review. Come on up. I think you got, you got an email. Yeah, and you have updated drawings for us? Jay, yeah. Yeah.
There are favoring.
Yep, right. Okay, I have to move them over. You're up. Want to give us an overview of where, what you're doing and.
Okay, so I am planning on building single family residence. But can't hear.
Alright, it's great.
Yeah, so my plan is build a single family residence on this piece of property, it's eleven point nine acres. It's two bedroom house, there is currently a driveway, a well and a lancher. That's been brought up to the site already, the site's been cleared, but there will be some of those. So my project involves the house.
And I'm assuming, I don't have the old plans in front of me from the previous owner, but I'm assuming that's general location of where the original, the house from the previous owner was going to go?
Yes, almost exact. Is the utility within the right away of the driveway or is it above ground?
What was that question?
It's under, it's underground, okay.
It's an utility. Right, is there? Yeah.
And the location of the septic system.
Right, so location of the septic system, we can remove from where the previous owners have located it. And the reason being is because the location where they have planned on putting it. Was a location where wanting to get in the future, I want to put this in. That was no longer an option, because the site is very. We create somewhat of a hardship, according to my engineer, the septic system has to be located on a. Land that is fifteen percent to grease of seedness or less. And in fact, on this particular property, there are three locations to put this septic. One is over where the well is, so that was no longer an option. The second option was where the previous owners have located it. And that I ruled out because one day I might want to put anything in that location. And so the third option is currently where it is located. At the end of the clears area.
And that has already been approved by the DOH.
Yes.
For that, a wooded location.
Well, it's actually, I don't know when it was cleared or. I don't know when it was cleared or cleared it, but that particular area is fairly clear of trees. All the trees on this property are new growth, young trees, there are no big substantial trees that are going to be cut down. In fact, there are no trees getting cut down at all, everything was previously to, before I own the property.
Exact the last time we looked at this, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
We had asked for. Fire truck turning radiuses to be superimposed on the plan, I don't know if this.
That's, I think that's what they're doing here.
Don't know. And also the turnouts are new.
Yes, so there's not to be happy, there's no current needs as long as.
Right, so you've got grading around them.
Yeah, that's not shown.
It's not shown, and you're so close on this number, it's probably going to push you over, so. You're gonna need a swift permit.
Area of disturbance.
The area disturbance. Three of them, you don't have even grading shown. The one that's in the. Clearly has to be regraded. Yeah, right.
Well, the engineer has them on drawings and he. Has not shown any grading, so I'm assuming that that was not necessary.
I, I, well, he's gonna have to prove that to us, because.
Yeah, like if you just take the area of the cutout, I mean, I, I'm a little bit familiar with site. And you're not going to be able to just put that cutout in there without disturbing beyond that cutout area. But that's going to add to the area of disturbance.
Yeah, and some of these areas that are shown as the limits, just you can't. Bulldozers don't make these kind of turns. Where the pool is, you got a little narrow triangle, that's going to get disturbed, I guarantee it. I'm not sure, I, it's not clear how the grading in the back of the house works, you show grading in the front of the house. But it looks like now the house is into a bank of some sort.
No, actually, the, the site of the house is fairly flat. And there will be no grading in that.
Showing, there is. So on the high side.
Yeah, showing contours, so I can't. You may need to do a detailed grading plan around the house, because it just doesn't seem, it's not clear to me what's going on.
I mean, I, I know that sometimes four members go to the study. I mean, to, to look at the site itself, and if he went up there, you'd see that it's actually quite flat on top. The location of the house does not finish on the. Higher areas. Behind the house.
Yeah, I would think that, you know, you're gonna ask your engineer again, and we'll, we'll probably set this for public hearing. And in the interim, the board can go out and visit the site. But I think you may want to just ask your, your engineer to reevaluate some of these locations for areas of disturbance and grading. Because as Joe said, it may well put you over the point nine one acres and, and get up to one plus. And it, you might as well just go for the slip permit, it's, it's not an expensive issue or, you know, it's not difficult to get. And it protects everyone, including yourself. Any other questions or comments?
So, all right, so are you suggesting that I have the function here?
Take a closer look at the grading, where all these areas are going to be, the turnouts, turnarounds, three on the radius, the driveway. If any other grading that may be behind the house, will it go beyond the limits that he's showing? But we fine tune that, as Joe said, you're very close, you're point nine one acres, you're very close to requiring a split anyway. And I think we need to make sure that, you know, we're not granting something that would have required it.
Okay, so if the engineer looks at that and. Explains that, okay, there's more grading needed and adds to a certain amount, which is actually less than an acre. How, how would we proceed, do we submit that to you prior to this?
Yeah, you can submit it, you can submit that before the, anytime.
And if it has to go into a switch.
Slip permit, it's stormwater prevention, runoff prevention. You just, you, you submit, you, you apply to DEC for it, and unless they deny it, you get it automatically.
Yeah, it's a no response.
It's a no response plan. So you apply for the permit, and unless they come back and tell you there's a reason you can't have it, you'll get it in whatever, ten days or.
And.
But, but it spells out then what you have to do as far as silk fencing and controlling water runoff and everything else.
Yeah, there's no silk fencing shown.
And you're gonna have to.
It's on the engine. So.
But I, I think, yeah.
So if in the original set drawing. The engineers.
So I think. And. Does that show, does that show the limits of disturbance on the other one?
Yes.
Why aren't we looking at it that far? Yeah.
I have a question about, like, this little dotted lines that is showing the area. Proposed limit of disturbance, because it's all a lot of time, so are you? Regrading this driveway, are you putting in?
Now, see, I, I frankly don't understand why the driveways exist in. It doesn't need to be graded, and I don't actually understand why he's included that in the limits of disturbance, but. I'm not sure why.
So that whole driveway is in the calculation?
Can't be.
Well, it's in his calculation of the, for the soil and erosion plan.
Not for limited disturbance though.
He's calling it down.
Yes.
It's a disturbance, that's why I mean, I'll look at this.
Disturbance, if you look down, lower part of the. Probably, you'll see it pointing to it.
Yeah, and it says one point seventy, seven, eight acres.
Yeah.
If that's just the driveway part, that's one.
That, that includes the drive, the entire drive, but why the driveway is included on that? As I said, this is right. But the only thing that would be, the change would be the poles, and the additional disturbance and the turns.
Yeah, okay.
So in my, in the site plan, separate from the engineer, the limits of disturbance included the house site. The turnarounds and the expanded switchback for driveway for.
In the septic. The septic's big.
He doesn't show the pool.
So this general site, what's called inspection and maintenance table. What's that for, who's gonna do the inspection and the maintenance? This for your contractor? It's pretty detailed, yes. And it's good, and I, I assume it will be the person. We need the, that, thank you. Being the driveway agency. So that's what, yes, the slip kind of does is make sure to pull that together for inspection and stuff like that. Um. But also, I don't know, this is part of this, but this whole slip thing and, and difficulties of having that reviewed. After, when it's under construction for the town to review that, and whether. You know, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what to propose to how to solve that problem, but it, it is.
He's calling for these permits on his plan, he's calling for a speedies and a slip.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so he's recognizing that it's gonna be over.
Yeah. I mean, we have drawings that don't.
Unless it gets down, not just five acres.
No, one acre, one acre.
He's calling for it on it.
He's calling for it in his notes. So it's, it's possible that he's the one that's gonna be applying for it, I don't know. It's not clear to us who's gonna be applying for it, but he's, he's calling it out that it's required.
Yeah, and he's showing, you know, a road section.
Yeah, because they're gonna have to re-profile the road, I mean, it's not gonna be regrading, but in profiling it, you're gonna go beyond the edges of, the limits of the existing driveway. And there will be disturbance beyond that.
You have an architectural site plan and engineering drawings that aren't coordinated. That's part of the problem, you show one thing, he shows another thing, so I, I suggest you get on the same page with your engineer. Doesn't get two different. Such a drawings here that don't agree.
Well. My understanding is that the driver is included, it's just for the snow erosion plan, but it didn't need to be included for the site plan?
We made comments the last time around about the driveway. I'm gonna assume they weren't done because. I guess they sold the property.
They did, yes.
So I don't believe unless you can prove to us through the old site plan that those improvements were made as per our approval. Then they're yet to be made.
And you're referring to what?
The radiuses at those. Switchbacks.
Well, but those are included in the site. Right? Because we're expanding the switchback, the driveway.
Yes, 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 but you got two sets of calculation, one from the engineer and one, I believe, I guess the site plan we first opened is your drawing.
Right, because the engineer has included the entire.
Okay, so which one are we supposed to believe? We got two documents here that don't agree. He show, you show pool, he doesn't show a pool. They, they, they gotta coordinate, they gotta be. You know, the same.
Guys, I think the architectural drawings have been superimposed on this very drawing. But. Everything flows together. Because I do think there's gonna be more, more areas of disturbance. All, all the way around, by the septic system, by the house and the pool, I think, I did see. Yeah, the, the, the area that's hashed out for disturbance around the pools is, is minimal, you know, and I think. I do think it would take a lot more than that, just, just the regrading if it falls in, there's gonna be more areas of disturbance, so he's gonna require a slip permit, he's calling out on the engineering drawing. So I just think it needs to be kind of coordinated so it all comes together.
And so, but the pool is actually not being built.
No, but you're looking for approval for it.
And you did put it on the site plan.
It's, it's either that or you take it off and you don't get the pool and approval, and then you've got to come back for the process. So that's, that's a decision you have to make. If you don't want to do the pool at this point in time and eliminate that area disturbance, whether that brings you down below an acre or not, I don't know, but. The bottom line is you could do that, but then you're gonna have to come back here and go through the process all over.
Yeah, your engineer seems to be proceeding as if he's giving us what we'd be asking for now.
Right.
May want to check with him and see what he's done, he may have submitted the slip to the, to the D C. He's talking about the manual, it's gotta be on site, he's even talking about a speedies permit, which is a discharge permit, which.
You may not need.
I don't, I don't know what the discharge is.
Yeah.
Well, we already have a D C statement.
Or.
To do this work.
Well, where, do you submit that?
Yes, basically, we submitted it to us. Or like a notice of intent or something like that. We, we actually do have a permit, we did confirm that the previous owners obtained the permit. And it was transferred into mine. So we are covered by.
Permit for what?
Yeah.
For this.
Do you have the permit with you?
We don't know what the permit.
This was in an identical site plan.
Right, I don't know how they.
And the septic moves.
Right, and you're not submitting the same drawings.
No, I think that we have, because we were transferred it into my name and it wasn't necessary to resubmit the drawings. Because it's all approximately the same limits of disturbance, but so the difference was very minimal and I didn't.
But there's a whole, septic system is a completely different location before and he said that, and it's.
Limits of disturbance included for the previous owners. Project and my project almost exactly.
We're not talking about limits, yeah, we're, we're talking about two different things here, I think, that, that, the. If you had a permit, if you had a stormwater pollution prevention plan. And you're saying that that's what. Was the previous owner had, and then that plan was switched over to your name? Well, we should be seeing those.
Yeah.
Those drawings, not these new drawings, we should be seeing those drawings. The previous owners draw?
Yeah.
If that's what you're saying, you have a permit for. But we don't, we, we can't compare the two, we don't know. We don't have both of them, right, to look at that.
I, I think, I think it'd be in your best interest to get the copy of whatever you have into Jay.
Okay.
So that.
I have the previous owners.
Yeah, the only thing is, we, we can't approve her drawings based on the previous owners' plans. I'd like to see whether or not a SWIP permit she has. And.
If that's a permit.
Yeah, and if they've issued her a SWIP. You know, and then she's covered by the area disturbance. We'll have to take a look at and see. But I think you need to get that into Jay if you have that and also the health department letter. What do we have that, Jay?
Uh, it is part of the file.
Okay.
The previous.
There's. I can email you.
Want to remember that site.
What the engineer sent me?
Right.
It's gonna be.
It's already has a clearing. This is the scenic. We need to discuss this. Right, are you finishing something?
Well, I was looking for the engineers.
We we have the. Yeah, I don't I don't have the engineers, but we have the health department letter that we have.
Want me to send this to you now?
No.
So this.
It doesn't. Oh, well, let's see.
This fuzzy that this pieces. Did they submit the old system?
Look at it on the phone.
Does it say it was moved for three bedroom? That's not with the three bedroom system. Can we see? Did you receive the two stamps? Approved plans back from. The health department?
Yes.
Can you?
Do you have them?
Yeah.
Do you have them with you now?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just want to see if they proved the prior, it's good, they're referring to the prior system, not the new system. The letter is referring to the prior system that was approved.
For a three bedroom.
You mean the letter from the E C?
No, from the health.
Health department.
No, that's not true.
Well, that's what the letter says.
I don't know what letter you're looking.
The the letter from the health department, it says. The letters acknowledge receipt of your engineering report and design plans submission depicting the water treatment system. The size. That was sized for a three bedroom.
It's a two bedroom house and it's.
Ma'am, can I finish reading, it says that was sized for a three bedroom. To serve a two bedroom residence, now we know that this was not the location of the prior system. So we want to.
I submitted, the engineer submitted all the septic design plans and that's what was approved. My house is a two bedroom house, but it's being sized for a three bedroom. And it it is approved.
Right. Yeah, when it's not clear, yeah. I mean.
Yeah, so if we just get a copy of the.
I mean, this is more complicated because there was a prior submission, so we're trying to make sure that we're getting the right information.
Um, and I I think prior to the board going out there. In your best interest to. Have the septic area area disturbance staked out. Ribbed off so that. The board can see exactly where it's going, that way they'll be able to see what trees do have to come down.
Yeah, we're concerned about that location and you already have a clear area of these high elevations on these steep slopes and one of the. Really telling us that we can protect these trees, we need to protect these slopes, we need to not be disturbing so much soil on these higher elevations. And so that's it's a big concern, it's I measured on the drawing, he's got a hundred and thirty feet by ninety feet. Of of disturbance for this subject. Also, it's right up against the property line. And I'm I I don't know, we, you know, we have setbacks for that, I mean, I guess the.
I don't I don't believe it is.
Doesn't show the reserve area.
So you can put it right up on the property line. Well, we are very concerned about this septic location. Um, and being in the scene of corridor overlay, all of these items. Um. That you can't take advantage of already cleared areas of real disappointment.
Is the property still changed?
Yes.
So we can't go up there.
Uh, well, there is a chain, it's not long. But you can go up there, I mean, I was.
Well, I definitely want to see this. Area, additional areas of disturbance planned so we can see. Or the.
Yeah.
And this. At the curb.
Why don't you, once you get that area staked out and ribboned off. Um. If you could. Call Jay and let him know that it's done. Then the board can make an appointment to go out there and we'll notify you when we're gonna be out there.
Okay.
Okay.
The other thing that we have discussed discussing about. Um, in in the in the quarter overlay and at these high elevations and. Um, lighting and all these kind of things.
I noticed on one of your plans, you did say that you want to do dark sky compliant. Lighting, it'd be great to see maybe some of the fixtures. That you plan to use, especially on the building. I assume you're gonna have like some. That um, it's just to ensure that they are dark.
Any other questions or comments or information that we're going to require for the public hearing?
I just, I noticed a couple of things on the environmental assessment, and I think it's just. Being unfamiliar with the situation, but you noticed too. On. On page one under four. I really. Not say. Were checked for us. And were non. Right, but just. Row is is, oh, I see, but it's not being used for. This property. I think this particular property. Right, I mean, I don't know.
It's based on rejoining or near.
You are.
Or near the.
In an old growth forest in a very significant forest area of our town, it's in our natural resource conservation plan. Um, we're tasked with. Recognizing this and helping to protect these these spaces. Um, they're very sensitive at these high elevations.
The um, as I mentioned, all those woods are in growth.
Yes, it's a lot of it has to do with these high elevation things, they're very clean soil that high elevation. Um, like for this septic system and in all this other stuff happening up there. You you've seen, you've read the stuff for the scenic corridor overlay zone, you've read the law for that and the comp plan and our natural resource protection plan. Um, these really spell out. The effort that this town has made of research. The significant habitats and important. What I noticed on the on the yeah. You you filled it out yourself, you didn't go online and fill it out.
No, I filled it out.
Okay, so normally you just go online and it fills it out, so it lets you know there's a critical habitat or endangered species or something like that, and so. Um, it does come up that um.
It's the northern longer.
Yeah, so so that you realize that there are, it is um. The possibility of uh, so number fifteen. It automatically fills it out and lets you know. Uh, that's the site. With proposed action. Which it had habitats lifted by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered. And it comes up, yes. The longer the northern longer bat. So you should. Know that. That's. Very important with tree clearing and and. You're.
Yeah, it's.
Be in their habitat.
Hybernation, hibernation cake. For those bats. So, I mean, you're okay now, but. Cutting should only be done November first and.
You know what, it's on the. On the planet.
Okay.
The engineer already put that time the clearing. In that window so that when the bats are not there.
Yeah, and I wherever there's forest, I would check for.
The importance of this is letting everybody know. What's up there? And what are the possibilities of disturbance?
Any other questions or comments?
So I think we we got the house. That that was it for the.
Okay, so for the. For the public hearing, then we're gonna be looking for. Um, whatever permit you do have. Um, and if it's not a SWIP, obviously your engineers indicated that. It's gonna need one anyway, so that should be applied for. You stamp drawing from the health department on the septic location, we need the. Septic location marked out, delineated. Prior to the board. Coming up on site, right? Um. And then, you know, look at the dark sky compliant lighting and everything else, so that at the public hearing, you can address those issues.
Do we know the trees that come down?
Yeah, well, she's gonna stake all that out, so. That gives a pretty good handle on what's gonna come down. Yeah, and yeah, and have worked with your engineers so that. This one becomes one kind of drawing, so the overlay, everything works, including areas of disturbance. Anything else? If not, I'll then motion of. Um, move this to a public hearing. For the next meeting. Motion. Yeah, doesn't do that too. Good for public hearing, motion made. Aaron.
Yes.
Favor. Propose. Harry, motion to lead agency. Bobby. All the favor. Uh, propose. Harry. Okay, you were set for public hearing for next month and. Have you ducks fallen around? Jay, you have Shepherd on?
I'm I'm here.
Okay. Okay, yeah, he's got. You got the applicant on. This is Shepherd. The long way. Okay, um, let's shepherd go ahead.
All right. Well, first of all, two things, I want to thank Jay for all our hard work to get us here, because there's been a lot of back and forth. Uh, and second, I want to thank all of you for. Having a Zoom here because I travel for work and it's been it's been difficult, so I apologize if there's any background here. Um, but um, so. You background, I think you may all remember, um, looking to put a shed in that thirty five long lake. Came last time with a crude picture, um, got the survey, uh, sketched it out and looking for a uh, seeking a variance for a. Uh, five feet. From property line to place the shed due to. The location of the property, basically the layout of the property, there's some limitations that I tried to provide. Um. So the. In addition to what you're seeing, Jay had emailed me. Asking about distance from the side of the shed to the other lines of the property. The other line, um, so I phoned a friend while I'm out on traveling. Um, it's twelve feet to one property line, it's fifty six feet from the front of the shed to the road. So to the other property line, so I hope that's uh, helpful for that additional information.
But he said fifty six fifty six feet to the right to the road.
To the road, yep. And then twelve feet.
To the rear property line.
Yep.
What's the requirement?
Fifty feet in the rear and twenty feet on the side.
Fifty feet in the rear at the long lake.
Road. Our ones.
They need rear yard variance.
With like ten front yard setback twenty. Side yard twenty. Setback fifty.
Is this where we add the percentage to?
Percentage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These are major. So what's the front yard?
Fifty.
That was fifty six, they said.
What's the requirement?
Oh, for the front, um.
You have it all out there.
Twenty, awesome, oh no, what why is that little dash line? What does that mean?
Oh, that's the minimum.
What's what table you?
That's max. So there's a max, so front yard minimum is twenty twenty.
And what's the rear yard?
Rear yard minimum is.
For accessory structure?
This it's a setback, so.
Just typically said accessory structures are different.
Yeah, that gives us that less, it doesn't tell us bits or something.
Um. According to this. This is. Structures shall be allowed to build within a rear yard setback provided there is a minimum of ten foot setback between the structure and the property line.
But there's that percentage thing, we find that at that point. On a. Didn't Ed say that, wasn't that Ed's comment?
Yeah, that's what we did with the form, that was on agricultural. Was it? Yeah.
What was the question? Wasn't, did did Ed apply the percentage of setbacks?
Yes.
He did, because it's a storage or equipment.
Now, how does that work?
We have to get, it's it's ten percent of the square footage of the building. So it's another twenty four feet. Which is a crazy. Requirement, we keep saying that, but.
They're still. Yeah, so this idea is still.
Yeah.
Let's see, that's that's. Uh, when I look at this, that's only.
Right, that's what I thought, it's only thirty, it this is road, it does.
Yeah, so it shouldn't apply.
Should apply.
But Ed said it did apply because it was a equipment.
No, it shouldn't. It's a shed and according to the table. He he's allowed to have ten foot, an accessory structure of ten foot from the rear yard. And he and he's got twelve.
Yeah, still not enough on the side, though.
No, he needs a side yard variance.
So what is the reason why you can't? Get another. What fifteen feet from the side?
There's a the top of the wellhead, that's what that dash line is, that diagonal line is the wellhead. So if we, if it's put further out, it's going to be, the wellhead's gonna be blocked and we're not gonna be able to move equipment into there.
There's missing numbers somewhere, because it's a hundred feet. I don't know.
Yeah, he's got twenty. It'll be thirty two. Yeah, so it's more like sixty eight feet.
Maybe. They probably went to measure the pavement. Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, that's what that's really where.
I just want to be confident, he only needs the one variant.
Because of the wellhead would be in the way, he moves it over to have access to it, but he he needs a variance of fifteen feet. Yeah.
Right, yeah, that's up to the Z B A, I mean, you know, the the issue here is, are we looking at everything, just. You know, and and you know, we don't have a problem with it, it's up to Z B A to determine whether they're gonna grant that much.
And given that the wellhead is there.
Yeah.
It seems reasonable. Yes, to for them to suggest that they.
Well, and it's also no other house there on that other side, so it doesn't. Well, and it's also no other house there on that other side, so it does, it would ever be.
Could be, right.
It says recreation area.
We were told that. Sorry.
Right.
I I was just gonna say that recreation area, I was told, but it's not, it's a protected area that's not gonna be built upon. So it's, it's, uh, it's gonna be forever worse, and I really hope that stays the case, because it's really nice to have that there. Nice, uh.
Just so you know, the dimensions you gave us don't add up to the length of the property line, so you may want to do some research. You said the front is fifty six, the building is twenty, and the rear yard setback is twelve. You're short, I think, twelve feet. Because clearly the length of the yard is, the length of the property line is a hundred feet, I'm just letting, you may want to figure out what the numbers are. I mean, the shed's twenty feet.
Are those referring to the size of the, what is the size of the shed again?
Twelve by twelve by twenty.
So that's not the twelve and the twenty, I'm referring to step back.
No, but he's, he's, he said he's twelve foot off the rear line right now. That's that's the proposal, it's not sure, no, but he told, he indicated that's what it was. But twelve foot off the the rear, the shed's twenty. There's twenty, so it's thirty two. And then he's saying fifty six to the front, but that doesn't make up a hundred, hundred feet, that's what Joe's pointing this.
Yeah, right. Just to point information.
Oh, obviously you got a little more property there somewhere.
One way, one side of it.
Yeah. As long as you're holding to the twelve feet in the rear.
Ends the minimum.
Yeah.
I think we sorted it out.
Yeah.
We can send it.
Yes, hundred by, it's one hundred by one fifty.
But having a recreation area.
Yeah.
Close to you.
It's not a building area, but still a property line.
Yeah.
And the street on the other side is apparently a paper street.
Right. All right, any other comments or questions, any concerns? If not, I'll. Entend a motion to recommend. Uh, to ZBA.
Yeah, we didn't, it's like, there's no wetland, there's no forest, there's no, is this a lawn?
Yeah.
I think we can just say, we give him a positive.
Yeah, we're giving positive recommendation.
Somebody else's house.
Okay.
Yeah.
All in favor of that, motion? Motion, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Carried, okay. You're all set, we'll be sending a letter to the ZBA and you'll be going back to them. Okay. All right.
Outside of building.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Jay, do you have anything else for us?
So I had previously discussed with man, the possibility of happening. In November or December, there was a training that the ZBA hosted last month. You guys feel that you'd still like the training with Jan next month?
I would love to do one, Stan.
Be via Zoom unless she's coming.
Yeah, instead of making her drive all the way over here and drive home at night, so far, if she can do it by Zoom.
Do the same thing, the night of our.
We want to gather.
We do it tonight at the planning board meeting, we can do it. Night of the planning board meeting, just do it early. But it will be in person, she'll be able to.
Yeah.
But we'll do it here, unless anyone can't make it, they can zoom into it anyway.
So I'll, um.
Okay, but did you say this was to be the night of the planning board meeting?
Yes, and it was like a five o'clock thing.
Oh.
Like like we've done in the past, five to seven and then.
That would be the first, December first.
Have a look outside, think about one month, like, I mean, markets.
Well, that's another time later, do, did we want to continue this discussion at all about these?
I don't want to stay another hour.
Okay.
About what?
Um, so we were given, um, about the conversation about maybe upping the application for building permit.
Yeah, we're.
So that they're coming to the planning board with a little more information.
Yeah, we we discussed that and we're gonna be discussing more with them too, so.
Okay.
Yeah, Jay and I had a conversation and Joe. And we had a conversation about it.
I can also bring you. A personally.
Okay. We'll talk.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn. Bobby, and all favor.
Hi, hi.
Opposed. We're out of here.
You have Jerry's single cell phone, he was asking you for.